Meeting of the Monday, June 4th, City Council, Manona City Council. LeCree, please call the roll.
Alder Kitsler.
Here.
Alder Coore.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Spade is excused.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If anybody would like to speak and hasn't filled out a slip, there's some on the table over there. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 21st, 2018 meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is appearances. We have four, or three, I guess, most of which are for the Winnequa Road. I'm going to have the one that isn't come up first, Charles Dykman. If you'd like to come up to the podium and would like to speak on transparency and process.
That is what this is about. Though disseminating information is what I'm discussing today, I'm using as an example the construction at the Tanya Wath, a boat landing. I understand the city was considering the project for perhaps three years. But the first that any of the neighbors in the area heard of the project was when the summer edition of the pamphlet came out showing what's going on this summer in Manona. So I went to the next meeting of the Parks Commission, but it was too late to have input into what I've been observing for 50 years of living next to the park and landing. Over 50 years, there have been about four, maybe five piers at the landing. For many years, I pulled stock cars and boaters out of the landing with my truck. But eventually, concrete slabs were installed, which mostly solved the problem. But that isn't what I'm here for tonight. The work has started and must be finished. My request is for a better way for the city to disseminate information about expensive projects. I don't have a recommendation for a price or a significance cutoff, but there has to be one. There are folks living in Manona who have life and practical experience about everyday things. Had the neighbors and boaters been notified that a new launch was contemplated, I'm sure that we could have added to the discussion about things such as usage, existing problems, existing benefits, a new situation of power launching where people with 150 horsepower motors on boats will put them onto the trailers by pushing down on the accelerator on the boat, which creates a torrent of water going out and digs holes. Dredging expectations and experience, other observations about launch use in all of the seasons, and there certainly is some, and the cost of options to this. Now, all of this, I think, would have been an advantage to the city and to the residents of the area and perhaps Manona, and would have resulted in, I think, a better project or a much less expensive project to do the things that are necessary. I realize there's significant inertia in any organization. Resistance to change is very hard. But new ideas do exist, which don't eat up a lot of staff time and add to the information the city accumulates and the citizens would appreciate and, I think, use. I don't have to agree with a project to appreciate being given an information to communicate the information that I might have. Now, this isn't rocket science. I believe that a council committee of one or one of the existing committees could discuss a better way to disseminate information about those affected by a project. Now, I'm not a perpetual grouser. I have my opinions on things, and having lived here a while, I do have thoughts on things. But I'd just like to see if the city can consider a better way to keep Manona's citizens informed about matters important to them. I'm aware of myManona.com, and I use it from time to time, but the information is not only good, but voluminous, and I can't spend the time, even though I'm retired, I can't spend the time necessary to go through everything to see if there's something that I'm interested in. So, we were notified last year that Tanya Wath, the trail, was going to be resurfaced and dug and a sewer system, and I think water was put in. I think that was really great, and I think if something could be accomplished to do the same thing, but for a significant project, and I don't have the definition of what is significant, but if it is a significant project, I think the city would be better off, the neighbors would be happier, if their input could be obtained about such a project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lightburn, did you want to speak? Were you going to speak, or did you just want to register? Yes. Didn't you just turn in this?
I'll speak.
Okay. You didn't check the box, so I wasn't sure.
Oh. I don't follow.
Well, we would call you up if you were going to speak. If not, we just read what you thought. Okay, now we will move on to Winnequa Road. We have one person registering in favor of the proposal, Judy Shachter, of 708 Moigara Road, and three people who would like to speak about it. We've also received, oh, and here's another one, two, I think at least, two emails, Dan?
Four emails.
Four emails.
That we have there, and then two more just came in that I don't have.
Okay, so four emails in favor, or four emails against and two in favor. So, if Sunny Schubert would like to come up, she would like to speak against the resolution. And I just wanted to point out, we try to limit these to three minutes.
I tried to.
Okay. I'm sure you did.
Although I would like to say that I find it interesting that I follow the good judge because my number one complaint with this is the total lack of transparency. We neighbors to this project were notified Friday. We were never told about your ad hoc remove all the, we want sidewalks committee, open house in May. It's concerning our street. You couldn't tell us about it?
Well, that was about the whole city.
Let me tell you, you know where I live. The tax bills get there every year. Anyway, why didn't you tell us? Number two, this lack, losing all our own street parking will hinder the ability of workmen to get to our homes. My husband and I are both old and retired, and we have yard people, and we have fix-it people, and they usually park in the street, and it's going to be a giant mess. And if they're parked in the driveway, then I have to park in the street or two blocks away now. It's not that I don't care about safety on this road, but the side street parking is inadequate, it's impractical for people with physical limitations. And please provide us with the police reports about all the car bicycle and car pedestrian accidents that have happened on this street. Since you have seen fit to deem it dangerous, please tell me how you will judge the success of this four-month experiment. No accidents? Whoa, there weren't any before. I guess that means it worked. Anyone who thinks that this experiment does not have a foregone conclusion, I've got a bridge over the Yarra River that I'd be happy to sell you. Finally, I don't trust you people anymore. You rebuilt this road in 2006. I went to every hearing. I trusted you then. You had a chance to rebuild the road and do it right, and you failed. I don't trust you because you could have built sidewalks in 2006 if that's what you wanted, but you didn't. And now you gave us those awful bump outs instead. I don't trust you because I think you've already made up your minds, the experiment's going to pass, and then at the end, you're going to say, hey, it was wonderful, nobody died. And I don't trust you because of your failure to provide us with adequate notification. It makes you look like you were trying to sneak something past us. Is that any way to treat your friends and neighbors who are also your taxpayers? In a word, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Yes, you need to state your name and address, the next person who comes up. Next up.
Sunny Schubert, 6107 Winnequa Road, right on the straightaway where the cars really go fast.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Burns, 6103 Winnequa Road. Who would like to speak in favor of?
Hi, Julie Burns, 6103 Winnequa Road. I live just down the street from Sunny. I am a resident, obviously, but I'm also on the pedestrian and bike committee, so I thought you all should know that. So, I am here to speak in favor of restricting the parking temporarily on Winnequa Road. That is going to cause my family and I some inconvenience, but it's an inconvenience that my husband and I are willing to ante in order to reach our common goal, which is safety. I mean, everyone is here, everyone that's here is concerned about the safety on Winnequa. Whether there's been accidents or not, everyone knows speeding is a problem and that the bike and pedestrian, not only have vehicles, the frequency and use by vehicles increased over the years, so has bikers and pedestrians that want to use that space. So, I'm here in favor of increasing safety. I also, you know, we moved into the neighborhood a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, and we have two young children. And my husband and I were noting that we don't go on walks or bike anymore. Our old neighborhood, we used to bike and walk everywhere, and we don't anymore because we live on Winnequa Road. It's not safe for our children. My son, who's five, and we have to cross the road to get to the bus stop, has almost been hit three times in the morning during the high-traffic times, and that's been very scary for us all. The other thing is the bump outs have been very dangerous as well because we are standing on the bump outs, waiting for the bus, and then bikers are pushed into the road, into the traffic. So there's definitely some things that need to be done. I think that the parking restriction is the first step into moving forward to that safety goal. I would like to see that as the first step. I don't think that's the answer. I want to see speed cushions placed on Winnequa Road that allow emergency vehicles to get through, but that will reduce the speed. I think the number one thing that reduces our safety is speed on that road. Then, I also would like to increase safety in the crosswalk areas. They need to be repainted. They are in odd positions. They need to be repainted and signed better. And, you know, one thing through the meetings that we've had is I feel that people have been this, they've been here, done this before, I haven't. But people want to see a timeline between short-term fixes and long-term fixes. And the short-term fixes that we just talked about, restricting parking, speed cushion, increasing the paint for sidewalks, things like that, are easy, short-term, low-cost things. And then, if you're going to redesign the road and re-engineer it, that's a long-term, whenever that happens, but, so, thank you.
Next up is George Lightburn, who would like to speak against, I assume?
I don't think I indicated that.
I'm assuming that's, I think I saw your comment on next door or something.
Pardon?
I thought I saw some other comments from you, but go ahead, whatever you'd like to say.
No, I'm George Lightburn, 5900 Winnequa Road. I'm not speaking for or against. I was kind of astonished when I got the letter on Friday, and I sent Doug, and I appreciate Doug responding to the concerns, or the questions I had, but I still haven't gotten an answer, that you would take the action, or consider taking the action. There's no information, there's no data about any accidents or incidents that have occurred on the road. We have lived on the road for 18 years, use it all the time, I bike, we walk, we walk quite a bit, actually, on the road, see a lot of special activities on the road on Saturdays where they use Winnequa Road for runs and bikes and all kinds of activities, apparently don't find it dangerous. And I think that was what sort of got me, was sort of labeling the road as dangerous without indicating what the basis for that was. And maybe there is something, maybe there's some information on why it's, but I remember I was on the CDA for a few years, and we used to label property as blighted. And I always remember that property owners were always concerned when their property was deemed blighted. I think people who live on a road and it's deemed by the city to be dangerous, I think either it was an ill-chosen term, or maybe it is dangerous, and I just don't know. But, anyway, so I'm not neither for or against the parking ban, I just don't know. There isn't nearly enough, and there was no information provided. And I would ask that, if anything, that the City Council lay over any action or any consideration of the issue until there's actual information provided to the public and to the council on why this action is deemed necessary. So, anyway, appreciate your consideration and look forward to any sort of response we might get. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Kurt Stute, who would like to speak against.
Hi, I'm Kurt Stute. I live at 6003 Winnequa Road. I am speaking against, in part because of my experience living on this road for 49 years. I grew up there, I learned to ride my bike on Winnequa Road, my children learned to ride their bikes on Winnequa Road. I honestly never felt it was unsafe, except for the speeding problem and people going down the street. The two problems I have noticed are speeding and people passing buses in the morning. And I share the similar problem where my son was almost hit several times as he was crossing the street to board the bus in the morning to go to school. And that does concern me. We've actually called the police and asked for them to monitor bus stops at times and gotten limited response to that. But this sort of solution to it of limiting parking would not solve any of that. So, yes, I agree, there are safety problems. I'm not sure that this solution addresses them. The question is, what really are we addressing? Are we addressing the speeding? In the past, it seems what we've been trying to do, when we put in the bump outs, that was to try to reduce the speeding. It hasn't had that effect. We've put in some stop signs, there was a stop sign at my house for a couple of months, and then it went away, and I'm not, I wasn't really privy to what the conversation was to add the stop sign or to remove it, so I'm not sure what led to that. But really, to me, I just drove down the length of Winnequa Road coming here, starting on the north side and driving down here, and just observing, the road is the same on the north side, all the way down in terms of the width and the markings, and there's one side you're supposed to park on. The only difference is, on the south side, we've added these bump outs, and we've added these lane markings for parked cars and for bike lanes that are not realistic because a parked car can't fit inside of the parked car lane. And now we've given a hazard that, oh my gosh, on a bike, I now have to go outside the bike lane, whereas in the past, that was never an issue, and you didn't really have to worry about it. I do understand that the south side probably gets more car volume. I understand that with the construction going on and what's happening, we might have more car volume on the south side. But again, I question the inherency of the problem, and I go back to some of the questions asked is, are we really addressing a safety problem? Are we addressing a speeding problem? Is the solution we're proposing here going to actually address the problem? If it's a speeding problem, I would contend that it's not, it actually might make it worse by having a wider lane. Personally, I live on a shared driveway. On the section of the road, my neighbors have a nanny who always has to park in the street, or she would be parking on our driveway. My neighbors are also doing extensive construction this summer. They're remodeling the entire first floor of their house. Every day this summer, and I expect it going on for several more months, they're going to have construction vehicles parked in front of my house and in front of their house. There is no way that it would fit into our shared driveway and have the driveway be even remotely useful. I know that that will cause problems for them if the construction vehicles are not allowed in front. And I, again, I question, what problem are we trying to solve, and is this temporary solution really, really going to address anything? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Public appearances are closed, then. There are no, there's no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. If it's okay with everyone, since we have guests here, I'm going to move the discussion of the Winnequa Road parking issue up from the end of the meeting to now, so everyone doesn't have to stay through our closed session and everything. So, and again, we are not voting on this tonight, we are only discussing it. We're not voting on it until June 18th. So the first item is item 2B, G2B, Consideration of Ordinance 6-18-700, Establishing Temporary No Parking on Winnequa Road, Put Forth by the Ad Hoc Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee. Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is ordinance establishing temporary no parking on Winnequa Road. The intent of the City of Manona is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare for the traffic on Winnequa Road. The temporary no parking zone would be from Owen Road to Bridge Road. The travel lanes, bike lanes, and parking lanes are considered to be too narrow to safely accommodate the various types of traffic in this section. The residential and contractor vehicles are parked in the southbound lane, where vehicles often encroach on the bike lane, which forces foot traffic and bike traffic out in the vehicle travel lanes of the road, making it unsafe for all. The pedestrian and bicycle ad hoc committee has recommended temporary no parking be established in the southbound lane on Winnequa Road from Owen Road to Bridge Road up until September The section of the ordinance that would be enforced for the temporary no parking would be Chapter 434, Article 3 for parking regulations. Again, this is first read here at City Council. It will appear again on June 18th.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Alder Moore?
Dan, can you explain to us if this was a response to resident concerns about the, my understanding is that part of the reason why this was taken up is that it was in fact in response to residents who were complaining that between landscaping trucks and construction trucks and other types of vehicles that were parking, particularly this time of year, that it was adding to what is a safety hazard on Winnequa Road? Is that correct?
For the, at least past two years, I know City Council, members of council, the police department, and at times the Public Works Committee has received complaints. I don't believe speeding was the issue of the complaints, rather, it was pedestrians and bicyclists for their safety from the vehicles parking on the road into the bike lane. Some of the other components of that were trash cans, yard waste, vegetation being placed on the bump outs, which then make them unusable for bikes to use the bump outs, so then they are on the road. So I don't know if speed was the main concern, it might be, but the bike pet committee was established based on the number of complaints the City Council and Police Department has received over the past few years, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, sure.
Alder Wood?
This is also going to be taken up at Public Works this week.
Yep, June 6th. Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to respond to a few of the comments and just sort of explain what the concern is. First, I'd just like to address the notice issue. I think that's kind of a red herring because I know you got the letter Friday, and the meeting is Monday. There's another meeting Wednesday. The council won't be acting on it for two more weeks, so, you know. What about the May? It was on the agenda, we didn't, this originally was going to be on, just on the Public Works Committee agenda, and then come to council from there, but since the pet bike committee was meeting at the end of May, it was added to that agenda. At that meeting, I actually said, we really need to send out letters to the residents in the area so that they know this is being considered, so that they would have an opportunity to come here to address it. I know it's been, apparently been a big discussion on next door, Manona, so, anyway.
I think, were you referring to the open house that we had at Winnequa? I think that's what she meant. We had about 80 people there, so.
That was for the entire city. No, we didn't send out invites to the entire city. We did.
Banning parking in front of the entire city's house? I don't see why you couldn't have notified the residents of the street.
Okay, well, we have notified the residents of the street now, and action hasn't been taken, and there'll be two more, this meeting and two more meetings.
Could I just clarify, the meeting you're talking about, that wasn't to discuss banning parking on the south of Winnequa? That was a discussion of safe bike and pedestrian routes throughout Manona. Citywide.
Right. It was an introduction to the whole, the plan, planning process, really, that's underway, and it was advertised on WBMO and the website and so forth. Anyway, we do have accident data for bikes and pets throughout the city. That's not really what's, and I don't have those numbers at the top of my head, I don't know that they're particularly high in this area. This is really driven more by the substandard design of the roadway. Through that section, we have, I think, a three-foot bike lane.
I have that data, Doug. Near the Frostwoods Beach Park, southbound, we have six-foot parking, five-foot bike, and nine-foot driving. Northbound, we have five-foot bike and 10-foot driving. We have another area just north of Graham Park. Southbound is six-foot parking, five-foot bike, and nine-foot driving. Northbound is five-foot bike and 10-foot for driving lane.
Right, and so, to have a combined, to have a bike lane next to a parking lane, you should have 13 feet. So we're between two and three feet short of that. There's no way to, you know, you can't squeeze it out of the, between the existing curve, there's no way to get that extra two to three feet because the lanes are already very narrow. Nine feet is substan, well, I don't know, substandard, but it's less than what we typically would build.
Doug, I have more data. This comes from the Facility's Development Manual for Complete Streets. Minimum parking should be eight feet, biking should be five to six feet, and driving lane should be 11 to 12 feet, at times 10 feet is acceptable to the DOT.
Right. So, I mean, a lot of the problems stem from the original design of the roadway when it was rebuilt back in '07, wasn't '07? I'm the only one up here who was around then, so I guess you could blame me for part of I'll forego the story about how we ended up voting on it at 2:00 in the morning, but that's, which was a bad idea. But, so that's what, the numbers that Dan talked about demonstrate that this is, there's not enough room in the roadway in that section to have that parking and the bike lane. To me, we can't, you know, there's nothing we can do to change, even if we wanted to, and I don't think we do, to make that not part of the lake loop. Even if we said, put up signs and said the lake loop goes some other way, that's the way bikers travel. There's an estimate of perhaps 500 bikers a day on weekends where ex- We're actually going to try to figure out a way to, to do a count, or the automated, the Gizmo, as we call it, that counts traffic, won't count, doesn't count bikes, but. So it's really, it's just, there's not enough room there. Somebody, if anybody who's parked, even a small car parked in the parking lane, they're typically, they're inside, their left wheels are right on, on the lane, on the bicycle lane marker on the pavement striping, which creates a danger that somebody could open their door as you're biking by and you bike into it and have a very serious accident, which, that's one of the things about pedestrian and bicycle accidents in general. They're not terribly frequent, but they are, tend to be much more serious than the average motor vehicle accident. Let's see. Well, as, so that's most of what I really have to say about this current proposal. I would note, we recognize there's a lot of concern on that street about speed, and that this, the no, this no parking proposal is a first step. I think that, I'm pretty certain that the Pet-Bike Committee will have recommendations with respect to how to address speed on the roadway and address the bump outs, which I think were a well-intentioned experiment that didn't work, and really make the situation worse by creating an unpredictability and pushing bikes into the driving lanes when they don't, otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't need to be there. I think bikers, I personally would prefer not to use them if there's no traffic around, and a lot of bikers just don't use them, period, so. In the past, when we've done speed studies, the data shows that speeds are about the same on Winnicott Road as they are on Nichols and Dean, but those streets have sidewalks, and so it's not as big a concern. And the committee will also be looking at whether to recommend a sidewalk, and I agree that that was something that should have been done when we rebuilt the street. I don't think, at that time, I don't think it would have, I'm certain, in fact, it would not have passed the City Council. But it didn't, it didn't make it into the, into the final plan that we voted on. So, that's really, that's pretty much it. Other than I wanted to, I did tell Chad I was going to blame him for everything tonight, since he was vacationing in Hawaii and we're here at a meeting, so.
Anyone else? Alda Kitser?
Here and elsewhere, people mentioned a stop sign, and stop signs being a solution for at least slowing down. I knew you have some insight. Well, one, I want to know, there used to be the stop sign at Frostwoods and Winnicott, and I'm wondering why that, I think you might have mentioned that it was taken out, why that was the case, and then, just generally, if stop signs are in effective mode to slow it down.
Right. We follow MUTCD manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a federal standard. One of the first lines for stop signs, it says not to be used to control speed. And we, by, by the city of Monona, adopt MUTCD by ordinance, and most municipalities across the United States follow MUTCD. Regarding the stop sign that was put in on Winnicott Road near Frostwoods, that was before my time here, but I believe there was a small study that was done, and that was a temporary, I don't want to call it a solution, but it was a try it, try it out kind of thing, and it was removed because I'm assuming for, you know, just for that, it's not, it's not to be installed to control speed. I don't know if that answers your question, so.
Anyone else?
Can I follow up on that? My understanding, and the reason that you don't use stop signs to control speed, or one of them is that they don't work. They don't actually slow, I mean, obviously, they slow traffic down where the stop sign is, but I think studies have shown that speeds in between stop signs increase. If drivers don't perceive a need for the stop sign, one, they probably won't come to a complete stop, and then, two, they tend to speed up afterwards, or happen to have slowed down for something they didn't perceive as necessary.
Alda Groupie?
So, it sounds like one of the concerns of neighbors on Winnicott is what sort of data collection is going, excuse me, is going to be done during the trial period to see what sort of impact it has? Can you speak to that at all, or?
I believe we're looking for complaints. Like I, like I mentioned earlier, the past few years, we've received a number of complaints, a number of photos, close call situations. There might not have been anybody who was killed out there, but there's definitely been close calls with bikers and pets, you know, nearly being impacted by vehicles. I don't know what the Bike-Ped Committee, Public Works, and City Council is going to be looking for, but we're going to do, you know, try and do a temporary no parking and see what, see what the results are. I do have one other bit of data from 2016 that our PD did. The 85th percentile for speed out there is 29 to 31 miles an hour. So it's, I believe it falls within the acceptable range for, for the PD, so.
Dan, how many cars a day do we know?
That, that speed study counted the average of 2,400 approximately, give or take a few each day in that area. And that was a nine-day study.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that, that one of the discussions that did come up in our, our public, our open house related to the Ad Hoc Ped and Bike Committee was, you know, was the issue of speed on Winnicott, and just to reiterate what Alder Wood was saying, you know, certainly something like speed bumps, if you will, is something that, that, you know, we're, we will be looking at as well. I know it's something that the, the police department and fire department has always been concerned about, because in fact, it does restrict their ability to get to emergencies. But there's also, from my understanding, from talking to both chiefs, you know, there's, as well as our engineering consultants, there's new technologies that aren't quite as painful, if you will, on the undercarriage of emergency vehicles if they are speeding to, to get to an emergency. So there may be something, to the point of short term and long term, there may be something, you know, that, that we, that we can do on that front, too. I, you know, I just, I just think we're obviously trying to be sensitive to all, you know, all potential issues impacting safety on the road, recognizing that some are easier to implement than others.
Anyone else? Alda Kitser?
I was just going to say, you know, one thing I'm looking for, I think you mentioned it, is a timeline. I think one of those things, whether this passes or not, a timeline with a comprehensive plan of what our action items are going to be into the future. I mean, I certainly don't want this to be the ending. I look at this as a beginning or a first step or a skipping stone. So I just want to lay that out there as something probably very obvious, but I think that would help me figure things out. As well as, you know, if you have the data on the number of complaints that we get, I mean, any hard numbers, whether it's from a survey or anything of that sort, I mean, I think, to the number of people's point, I think that's helpful to have that information. And I'm certainly looking forward to the feedback that was received, whether it was from the workshop or before and after. I think the, you know, citizens were able to provide feedback on, you know, different ideas, or submit their own ideas, provide ideas about, you know, feedback on the PowerPoint that was presented, which is online as well. So, you know, I, I think Doug mentioned it, this is a different council, 2006 is a long time ago, and, you know, unfortunately, we have to deal with what they decided at that time as apparently the best decision, and I didn't agree with it then, and I don't agree with it now.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
I just, I just want to add that I'd like to see both, rather than focus on just the complaints, I'd like to see us focus on both, perhaps positive feedback, which we obviously had some of tonight as well, as well as the complaints. I, you know, I think we need to look at the whole picture when listening to residents. And I, I guess I also, as someone who advocated for what is now a communications needs assessment that the city is undergoing in this year's budget, I would, I would just want to say that, for lack of a better way to put it, I hope residents can understand that our communications apparatus is, is limited to, for the most part, beyond VMO, our radio station, the staff, which is already stretched thinner than you can possibly imagine, fitting their communications under other duties as assigned. And so, that doesn't excuse, sometimes when we, when, I'm sure when residents would like a more advanced notice, or we might like more advanced notice even as Alders to various things that go on, but it's just to say that I know that the staff works really hard, and we work really hard as well to try to keep residents up to date, and that we do follow very established procedures, like having a first read on an issue, and having lots of committees look at virtually everything that we do before decisions are made, so.
And we all always post all agendas in several places, and they're available on the website. Anything we're considering is on the agendas, so. We really aren't supposed to get into a back and forth with the observers, I guess, are we? Is it okay, if you'd like to say something, Kurt?
I'm just concerned that what we presented as the data collection for the point of this temporary shutdown is to see whether we have a reduction in complaints. It's a pretty nebulous criteria that is going to lead us with not necessarily a lot of hard data.
Data as to whether it was a success or not, and there's a lot of factors that could go into an increase or decrease in complaints that would not necessarily be important in this test.
I, I think we'll be doing more than just looking at complaints. I would assume we'd be doing some kind of a survey at a minimum, most likely. And we are working with the traffic engineers about this, about this entire issue. When I appointed the committee, it was to look at not only the lower end of Winnicott Road, but as I said before, safe corridors throughout the city. Actually, Alder Wood put, asked for additional money in the budget to cover that study, and so we're looking at short and long-term solutions. This just happened to be what came up first, but it certainly isn't all just focused on, on this end of Winnicott Road. And the committee is, will be giving a report to the council later this year, I think, and suggesting a variety of solutions. And some of these are going to take years, because obviously, if we're talking about reconstructing streets, and we're not talking about sidewalks all over the city, but there are places where we will probably have sidewalks recommended, but that all takes money, and it's all going to take place over the course of many years, I'm sure, so. Anyone else? Alda Groupie?
I just want to say, on a last note, that I really appreciate that you came and shared today. I think your input is really important. I think these discussions are really important, and they help us, they help inform our decisions. So I think participating in the process is very valuable, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we have another item related to this, that I think, Dan, if you want to stay up there, and we'll cover that as well. Item 2G2C, consideration of ordinance 6-18-701, establishing no parking here to corner on Owen Road, also put forth by the Ad Hoc Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the meeting, I did hand out this map to you all, to give you a visual of what we're asking for here. So, this is a first reading as well. Ordinance establishing no parking here to corner on Owen Road. The pedestrian and bicycle safety concern exists for this type of traffic on Winnicott Road exiting eastbound onto Owen Road. Pedestrian and bicycle traffic currently use the bump outs on Winnicott Road at Owen Road to travel eastbound on Owen. At times, encounter parked vehicles immediately past the bump outs. So this is a request to do a no parking here to corner, be established for a distance of 20 feet from the end of the bump out. The total distance from that end of the bump out to the first driveway there is about 41 feet, so if, if the 20 feet is established, there should be enough for a small car to park there. This would be enforced under the Chapter 434, Article 3, Parking Regulations. And this is also going to be at the Public Works Committee this week, and then back here on June 18th for council approval.
Anyone? Alda Kurt?
Oh, is that a fire hydrant in the corner?
It appears to be, yep.
Wouldn't we have no parking in front of that anyways?
10 feet. So basically, the bump out would serve as that, that no parking for that.
Alder Wood?
This, this proposal, unlike the, the first one, is not a temporary change. Something that, whether we do the other no parking, we really, this needs to be addressed on an ongoing basis, because it, there, there have been instances, I know, where vehicles are parked very near the, the end of that bump out, so that people don't have an opportunity to safely exit the bump out.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Dan, and thank you all for coming and giving us your input, and we'll be discussing this again on the 18th. We are moving back up. Item G1A, unfinished business, convene in closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, per N1, per N E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This regards the development agreement with West Broadway Hotel Associates LLC. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Lou Clark, please call the roll.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alda Kitser?
Aye.
Alda Kurt?
Aye.
Alda Groupie?
Aye.
Alda Moore?
Aye.
We're in closed session. This next item, then, is start for immediate action. Item G1C, consideration of resolution 18-6-2271, approving a revised development agreement with West Broadway Hotel Associates LLC, put forth by the Community Development Authority. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Motion to take this. This is. Motion to take this item out of order?
It's unfinished business, so.
Yeah, it is. I don't know why it started.
I don't know why it started.
Oh, good point.
Move to approve, then.
Okay.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Development agreement is approved. Item G1D, consideration of ordinance 5-18-699, amending Chapter 480-20 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Historic Conservation, put forth by the Landmarks Commission and the Plan Commission. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Okay. Stefani?
Thank you. This was last reviewed at the May 21st City Council meeting in the first read, and at that time, I summarized the changes. It includes a lot of additional text that clarifies processes for things like nominating a landmark, applying for a variance when changes to a landmark are proposed, a process for appeals, et cetera. And at the, the ordinance draft that's included in your packet, again, was the recommendation straight from the Landmarks Commission, and the Plan Commission had that one change in their recommendation where they removed the reference to any person's ability to apply, to nominate a landmark to be designated. Ultimately, the City Council has the final decision.
Okay, so that's something that someone would have to add, or is it?
If you wanted to approve the Landmarks Commission's recommendation, you could approve the resolution as it is written, and if you wanted to approve the Plan Commission's recommendation, you would specifically have to make that change.
Okay. Any comments, questions, Doug?
One other wording change that I, I think we talked about here the last time was um... One other wording change that I, I think we talked about here the last time was down in the variances economic hardship, page sixty-one, if you're looking at the council electronic packet. Where it's under C, the required documentation should include, and we've gone, I think landmarks originally had shall and Plan recommended changing it to may. And I think they actually, either may, may is actually better than should because it means that it would be, the required documentation may include, I mean, that would, as determined by staff or the Landmarks Commission. So I guess I would, I would move to, to amend that sentence to read, required documentation may include as determined by city staff or the Landmarks Commission, colon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes.
Changes? And well, whoever made the initial motion, okay with that?
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Any comments about that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we are back to the original motion. And Doug, did you have any other changes or?
Nope.
Want to leave it as is? Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, and one final item. This is also start for immediate approval under new business two A, consideration of renewal application for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen patio permit with new variance for Valdemar Incorporated Doing Businesses, Silver Eagle Bar and Grill, fifty-eight oh five Monona Drive, put forth by the License Review Committee. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Move approval.
Second.
So this, this would just extend, instead of them having to close their patio at nine, they would be able to keep it open until ten.
Any questions? Concerns?
Alder Coor? Do we have this extended to any of other businesses?
They're the first ones that have asked. I think we'd have to, we would, obviously being a variance, we'd have to take them on a case-by-case basis. There had, when they initially had come in to, to put in their patio, there were some neighbors, the apartments across the street, like behind David's Jamaican back there, had concerns about it. But since it's actually been in operation, they haven't, they have made no complaints about it. And the police department has, had no problems with the patio operation. I could see, you know, other places where it's closer to residential areas, it might not be appropriate to extend it, but it seemed to make sense for this one.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Onto reports of committees, commissions, et cetera. Alder Coor?
Nothing to report.
Alder Kitzler?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Moore?
No report.
Alder Groupie?
Just a reminder that the summer reading program started on the first. And just as an FYI, the first summer concert series is June eighteenth with Quest. And that's brought to you by the Friends of Monona Senior Center.
City Clerk?
Board of review was last Wednesday evening and all of the cases were resolved prior to the meeting. So it was an hour and a half of talking, which was really fun because we had fun. It was literally fun. And the only case to resolve really was waiving the Walmart's, Walmart's request for a waiver. So that's what happened. And otherwise, the cases were resolved, one of them in the car on the way by the city assessors. So, well, well.
Okay. City Administrator Little?
Just a shout out to our Parks Department. If you haven't seen Wild Haven Park shaping up, it's looking great. I just love that new deck. And we rented a shelter at O'Naita Park for a family party and my family had many compliments about our city and the park. So I was pleased to, to hear that from the people who had never been to one before, so great job from Parks Department.
And I noticed the pool opened for a little while this afternoon, which is nice. And it was open this weekend. Unfortunately, yesterday it wasn't exactly pool weather, I don't think. I don't really have anything either, except once again, we hope to not meet on July second. So if you have anything that you want to bring forward, it would have been nice to have it for first read this time. But if you've got something immediate, be sure to have it on the agenda for the next meeting. And we have two appointments tonight. Andrew Peick to the Tourism Commission, effective immediately through April twenty nineteen. Cheryl Devoe to the Public Safety Committee, effective immediately through April twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Appointments are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.